So we can continue our discussion about MacArthur Ave. So, oh, there's a request for continuance?
There is a request for continuance in the next meeting.
And when is the next meeting?
I have one yet.
I throw July 29th out to Justice.
That's one that's three weeks from tonight.
I don't have anything on that night. Are you okay?
Good.
Everybody else okay?
Yep.
29th is okay.
Jeff, you have a BOS meeting? I think so. So that's why I went in. What was the change that?
You may be right.
Yeah, Mary, they give me a list of dates, but I know it changes.
Well, that Tuesday's fine.
Okay.
Okay, let's see now, 7:31, we'll well be on that. 242 Dedham Street.
If you want to, you need, somebody needs to move to continue it to a date and time, to public hearing.
Oh.
A move that we continue the MacArthur Ave public hearing to our next meeting at July 29th at 7:30 PM.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Is that a, is that a hearing?
Yes, that was a public hearing.
All right. 242 Dedham Street.
Yes.
You representing?
Yes.
You want to just state your name?
Good evening, yeah, my name is Rick Merrican, American Engineering.
Oh, microphone please.
Microphone.
For the folks at home, not for here.
Ah, yes, my name is Richard Merrican, American Engineering in Milis. Representing the new owners of 242 Dedham Street. I don't know if you're aware, but the property's been sold. And the new owners are John Primpus, who you know, owns Dunkin' Donuts in town, and Bill and Chris Galopolous, who own all the Dunkin' Donuts in Walpole. So they being operators, and they have someone now who is going to run the gasoline and convenience store portion of this. So when Al did it, you know, he was supposing what would happen with somebody. This is the actual, so since they own it, they would like to make a few changes to the property. We don't think they're too significant, but we'd like to discuss it and get opinions from the board as to whether you, they're appropriate, and number two, how, as Betsy said, whether we, it's a minor or a major modification to the approved site plan. So the first item, the first pass here was to widen the entrances to 36 feet from 24. Now, this came from the guy who's going to operate the gasoline service portion. And he, he's, as you can see, we moved the entrance from the middle to the end to allow better circulation through the pump area. And his big concern, I think, is the bigger vehicles that are going to be serviced by this, certainly not big truck to trailers, but the larger pickups and the small vans and that kind of thing. So that's number one. Number two is, we'd like to reduce down to four pumps from five, same island, you just spread them out a bit. In order to moving the driveway from the middle to the side, we consolidated the two parking areas. There was one on the left and one on the right, so they're all on the left now. The other item of significance is the typical Dunkin' Donuts has a walk-in freezer attached to the building. Maybe you probably haven't noticed, but the original plan had the dumpster here, but they need a freezer, so we've, we've put the freezer in the ATM here and moved the dumpster over to the corner over here.
Wasn't the dumpster always back there?
No, it was, it was right, right here next to the buil-- maybe it started back there, I don't know. We widened this curve just a little bit to allow, again, the larger vehicles to pass around easier. And there was some adjustment to the location of the windows, again, reflective of the actual building that's going to be built versus the Al's proposed. The building they're proposing is slightly smaller, and I gave you a plan, shows the interior, it's an open, open floor plan inside. It's going to have a Dunkin' Donuts counter, a Subway counter, and then a convenience store with the gas payment on the other side. So there's a slight adjustment in the building. Since the building was a little smaller, we kind of proposed maybe put a couple of outside tables here. I don't know if that's an issue in town or not, but we thought we'd suggest it. We relocated, if you looked at the original, the handicap was over here, but since the main door is in the middle now, we relocated the handicap entrance there. And other than that, it's pretty much the same. Now, in order to relocate the entrance, I did have to make a few adjustments, so like where the catch basins are and things, so if, you know, we get to Tom, we, the catch basins were here, now they're over here, so we would have to adjust the drain lines a little bit. Now, since we gave you this plan, the, they have been talking to other operators, and another alternative might be two entrances, an in and an out for Dedham Street. So we'd kind of like to get your feedback on that tonight, so that, because we have to apply to the state, that's a state road, so we'd like to apply with the appropriate plan. So this would be two 24-foot entrances, an in and an out. I guess under the original, this was only supposed to be an exit, is that correct?
Enter.
Enter, okay. So these, this would be an in and an out here, and again, the operator felt that this might be an improvement to the circulation portion of it. The other significant item was that they were, they have requested 50,000 gallons instead of 30 for the gas storage, and I believe they actually got the permit from the selectmen from, from that, for that. But the tanks would be in the same location, they're just slightly larger. So those are the main points, and of course, moving the driveway is, we're going to have to adjust the landscaping and things like that. So the only other issue that might be an issue, if we make no other changes, we might have a little more impervious cover. Now, we can probably, because we made the building smaller, I think we might be able to make, eliminate a couple of parking spaces, in which case we might be able to get back if, if that's a big deal. If it's not a big deal, you know, we'd probably leave it the way it is. So that's why we're here. So appreciate your feedback on those items.
Do we have the approved plan around, do we have a copy of that?
I can grab it.
You have it, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I'd like to see the approved, I'd like to see what we approved, to see how major this is.
I'll run this to the office and grab it.
Yeah, John was just mentioning, the other item that the, the gas operator suggested, there's more lights in the canopy, the can lights. He thought, what did they have?
They had six, so really, you're supposed to have four for each pump.
Yeah.
So they're proposing 16.
They're all downlights, so they don't really affect anything else, but.
Our, our personal preference, I mean, I know from drive-through queues, I mean, we'd like to go more with this one as opposed to the first one you saw. So I mean, I think the.
Oh, the two ends.
Yeah, that's, it's just a better flow of traffic.
Well, I don't like the 36-foot wide driveway for pedestrians, at least.
Yes, right, yeah, right. And, you know, grade-wise, the site will stay the same, we don't, you know, few minor changes, but the drainage should stay exactly the same, so it's not that big a change.
We're, I like the flow of that as well, but where that driveway to the right is going to be more proximate to the adjacent property in terms of elevations, I forget, you know, what we were looking at there.
Well, the, the big issue, and Rick probably doesn't know it, but the septic system was tucked in that corner and elevated, because it, it had good soil there and they had reasonable separation of groundwater, so you, that's incompatible with putting the driveway there. Not to say you can't put the septic system somewhere else.
Right.
But it was somewhat of a struggle to.
I was planning to, the, the septic system is two fields, and I was planning to move them closer together, so it probably, it would be right in this area here, is that an issue, Tom? Is that it?
I don't, I don't think so. I think the soils were generally good, but I know trying to fit the fields on the site, because it's a pretty, you know, encompassing program of improvements here, it was hard to fit it in.
Yeah.
And that was the first reaction I had, oh, there's a driveway going through.
Well, you can have, you can have the, the system under, under a driveway.
Yeah, yeah.
The really only issue is the drainage, so you gotta kind of play around with the drainage a little bit. But I think we can slide it over and leave this one where it was and put the other one right next to it.
My further guess would be that Mass DOT won't go for a 36-foot driveway.
Well, I, I've already advised them that that's not usually what they do, I don't know.
Unless they're in a very good mood.
1A maybe, you know, we generally deal with them on Route 1, they're a little tougher, maybe on 1A they wouldn't be, but we would ask.
Can I ask?
But this works good.
Do you folks have to get a curb cut from the state?
Yes, that's what we're applying for.
You need two curb cuts then, correct?
Well, if we go with two driveways, we need two curb cuts, so.
Would they give you an issue with four egresses onto 1A in a 320-foot distance?
I don't think so. Generally, they deal with the property. If there was a traffic issue, they, they may try to restrict you to one, but I don't, I don't believe there's a real traffic issue here, so.
And related to that, that road was paved in the last year.
Yeah.
Did you clear the five-year moratorium on new curb cuts on state paved roads?
We haven't dealt with that yet. Unfortunately, Al, I don't believe Al applied, so.
Because I had that happen to me once.
Yes.
And the Taunton District Director was pretty tough on cutting into his pavement within five years of a new paving.
It, it's, it's an issue. Sometimes they make you go a little extra mile, maybe, maybe have to curb to curb, you know, through, throughout your area or something, but we'll see when we go there, yeah.
Steve, if I might.
Yep, go right in.
My, my first impression is none of these changes are really.
No.
Major.
No, I don't think they're major.
But cumulatively, there's a bunch of them.
There's a bunch of them, yes.
And I'm a little uncomfortable with the neighbors and the brothers, don't get a chance to at least see what's proposed, and so, I don't know.
Well, I mean, it's up to you. The only difference is a public hearing. You know, as a minor, you can just approve it, and the other way with a public hearing, so it's up to you guys.
At least the purpose of increasing the gas tank sizes by two-thirds.
I, that.
Good evening, my name is Kaleel, Yatim, one of the owners, Yatko Energy. One of the major reasons is we have more control with pricing. With more bigger tanks, you fill your tanks, when prices goes up or down, you can maintain the pricing. You don't need to move right away. Secondly, less deliveries to the property, less tank deliveries coming in and out, so it's most safer, so we have, we can fill the tanks once, once every other week and have enough in there to carry us over. Those are the two major reasons. Thank you.
It, it's the same design essentially, you know, with the tanks, yeah.
Just one bit of objective information, the, the butter from Sharon Zav, the gentleman from that property, was actually present last night at the Board of Selectmen meeting for the discussion concerning the upgrade in volume from 30,000 to 50,000 gallons. So his question and concern had to do with the retaining wall and location and elevation and such, and what he was told by these gentlemen is that there is no change either laterally or vertically, and that was the extent of his concern vis-à-vis the tanks, and at that time, this layout was discussed, so.
That's helpful, thank you.
So, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, there's no change up there.
It does look as though the existing, on those plans for what abouts him is the same as what's on this new one.
So the left is in and the right is exit?
No, so.
In and the right.
In, in here.
In. Go to, go here park or just direct shot to the drive-thru?
Yeah.
This, this will be, they can either go out this way if they want, or they can just go straight shot out this way?
Is it drive-through in the back?
Yes.
Yeah, the window's in the back.
Windows right here in the back, yeah.
That was already approved.
And there's, Duncan has a new design where they have a pay window and a pickup window like you do at McDonald's now with the new ones, so they'd have the two windows, yeah.
And is there a lighting plan?
We will do a new lighting plan, as I said, we have to revise the whole set, so, but I wanted to get your opinions, we didn't want to head in the wrong direction, so we will revise the lighting plan, yes.
Okay.
Looks like the elevations have changed significantly, would that have to go through DRB again?
Which elevations? Oh, the building elevations?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, I don't know.
Did you send that to Bob?
I did not send that to Bob.
Yeah, the building that, that was proposed before would just.
Yeah, this is quite different.
Didn't work for us.
Yeah. But it's a significant, it's a material change. I'm not saying it's worse.
You wouldn't notice that, would you?
Yeah, no, we can, there's a separate sheet for that, I have extras if you want.
Those darn architects, huh?
Yeah, those darn architects.
So Michelle, is it the base elevation or the roof, roof line that you're allowing?
Roof and the dormers.
The roof lines, yep, we have that in our packet, but I'm trying to just get to the original materials.
Oh, the original one, yes, the original one.
Is that the old plan?
Yeah.
Yeah, this is the original.
This is what we approved.
This is the old plan, yeah.
So it's this kind of an elevation from here to, we got everything changed, the roof pitch, roof line, dormer.
I like the new one.
Actually, I like the new one more than I like the old one.
I do, you break it up.
It's a nicer-looking building, yeah.
It's, so it's retrofitting like the new Cumberland Fox, essentially.
Right. It's all block, this has a stone plus.
I think with all the changes you have going on, even though they're smaller in nature, it might warrant having a public hearing just to let anybody want to chirp in on this too, especially we get the drainage changing too.
Again, on a minor nature, none of the infiltrations will change, it'd just be the location of the catch basins, yeah.
How does it affect our timeline if we have like a public hearing?
You know, it's pretty significant.
Since the other plans are already approved, how does that work?
What's the advertising period for?
Well, the next meeting is the 29th, we could do it, we could have the public hearing.
Because we have zoning board permits that expire in November, so we have like a couple.
Who's not got a microphone on?
microphone's on, sir.
Someone's not on.
She says it isn't.
Are you on, Mr. Merrican?
I think so, the.
Green light?
The green light is on, yeah.
Hello, hello?
Donna?
Anybody from home?
Yeah, I mean.
So anyway, sir, so you were saying about the zoning board, good.
The zoning permits run out in November.
November.
I think if they heard you were going for a modification, they'd be happy to extend it. What, do you have a one-year special permit?
No, it's only six months.
I mean, they can be extended, but, you know, you don't have to ask if you don't have to, yeah.
Well, how do most members feel about whether it's a minor or a major modi, or, or at least a modification that's going to require a public hearing? Does most, do most people feel as though it's beyond a minor modification, or do you think it's a, it is a minor modification? To me, it looks minor.
I'm comfortable with it. I mean, I know we had discussed about the landscaping in the past in terms of the headlights, and that's all going to change now because of the two driveway concept, so, and I'm not suggesting that that's an insurmountable issue, I'm just saying that there are some other details that.
Sure, and we're happy to deal with the details, yeah.
But aside from those types of things, which I'm sure can be worked through, the only other item that I recall is coming up in the past that, you know, had created some concern, and I think it was alleviated, had to do with the relative, you know, elevation of the two properties, you know, and any issue in terms of there being a site distance issue, you know, so I don't know.
Between these two, yeah.
Maybe we can just discuss that to make sure that there's no issue, because it is moving closer now to that problem.
Well, we'll be pulling down most of the mound here, so, you know, what might have blocked before, because it was high, will come down, so that might even be better.
I think the fundamental layout is pretty good, actually.
Is it still going to have a retaining wall across?
Yes.
Most of the bulk of the front.
The back and the side.
No, I'm talking about the front, the front.
Oh, no, we'd be, we'd be removing the retaining wall that's there, and I noted that, you know, the DPW wanted to continue it, so we'll talk to him. We could construct a wall in here, I don't think it's necessary, but if, if necessary, we could do that.
In the access, there were some stairs, if I recall.
Well, we, we went away from the stairs and we went for the sidewalk.
Yeah, a slope sidewalk.
Yeah.
Steve, what was the planning board's reasoning initially to have the egress in the middle of the frontage?
That wasn't the planning board, that was a request by.
Yeah, that was, yeah.
Yeah.
And, you know, when you're proposing it to sell it to somebody else, you really don't know what.
Absolutely.
You know, you do the best you can, but.
I believe he was talking to somebody, and this is the design that the people that he was talking to preferred.
Yeah, the old design, it's just, it's way too congested the way with like the five tanks, it's just, it'd be a nightmare.
There's a lot going on there.
Yeah.
We always felt that.
Yeah, this works, this works better for the in for the.
It does work better.
In for the other, yeah, yeah.
Except maybe for the tanker truck during fueling operations? Have you looked at that?
Well, we still have the loading area over here. We haven't really, I will take a look at that, Tom, in terms of getting around, yeah.
Yeah, because getting that in a position where it can be shielded while it's loading is a critical.
Yes, that's always tricky.
Aspect.
Yes, right, yeah, we'll look at that.
So I, I agree with Jeff that I believe that the original intent and, you know, general use and general layout, you know, meets what we had approved already, and I think there are, you know, a lot of minor things we'll have to review, but I agree they're minor, but I guess, playing devil's advocate, my question is, what's the harm of the public hearing? They have to produce a whole set of documents anyway, so they could be working on that.
My guess is this wouldn't be signed by us more than likely. If it was, if it was approved, it would be contingent on seeing the new plans and.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Well, that's, that's the thing, they have to put a whole set of plans in front of us.
Yes, yes.
They're not going to have all of those, I don't, would you have that whole set done in three weeks?
Hopefully.
So, I mean, the only risk, the only risk of doing the public hearing is that there's a few more minor comments that could then be absorbed into the drawings. I guess I don't see a, I mean, I think we're meeting the original intent, but there's so many little changes, I don't know if it's.
I think, I think when you're having a butter and you're, you're having a hazardous capacity change by this much, I think that you have an obligation to just see if anybody, I know at one of your hearings, way back when, there was a man across the street that talked about his concern with the big tanks.
I spoke to Mr. Walsh.
Yeah.
Yeah, I spoke to him the other day.
Yeah. No, that's all right.
No, that, but my, my point was just the fact that you're increasing the, the size of a flammable fluid that much, I think it, don't get me wrong, I think all the changes are positive myself. I think it's a great-looking building, much nicer, but I think with the, the compilation of some grade changes, landscaping, walls, oil tank capacity, the elevations of the building have changed that were approved by the design review, just in totality, it's a real lot.
I think that the consensus is that it, although it's not what they would consider a major change, it is certainly not minor. So I think that the, the board, from what I hear, would prefer to have an open hearing.
Well, if we can do it on the 29th, that would be the hearing we'd be discussing it anyway, so.
Right, right.
Yeah, that's fine, yeah.
Okay, so that's what we'll do.
Can we, can we take down the house?
Do you have a demolition permit?
Yeah.
Yeah, the fire department, I did a training access.
Oh, well, you've already gotten approved.
We have an approved plan, so you can always go back to the original, right?
I don't see, I don't see any issue with room over the house. Does anybody else have any issues with that?
It's within your right to do that.
He has an approved plan and they.
Ray, do you think that there's any issue with?
As long as he has a building permit, he's got an approved plan.
Yeah.
Demo permit.
Demol, sorry.
Now, I have a question, probably moot since it's going to be a major. We would appropriately change the, you know, the designer on the plan, because that's going to be us, and the new owners, that's okay to make those changes on the plan?
Please do.
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
So you have your sign and everything on the plan?
Yes, the signs are the same, yeah, we haven't changed the signs, not even.
Oh, the signs are going to be exactly the same?
Well, we, we may bring in, they, they were discussed, they had kind of a sign thing, so we'll bring it in for you.
Yeah, we always like to see the detail on the sign.
Yeah.
And the entrance and exit signs on 1A would be lit, would you be correct?
Externally lit, right?
Lit, if they can be lit, that'd be great.
No.
No.
You know better.
Not neon, but light, just for people going in the wrong egress.
Oh, externally lit.
Yes.
Yeah, floodlit, yeah, yeah.
Just so the board is aware, we spoke sort of briefly about the downlighting under the canopy, but a lot of the franchises target like 50-foot candles under these canopies, and the town's normal limit is five, so if you want to give guidance with respect to that particular issue, it might be good before somebody wires something along.
What was the original time, do you remember?
I don't know. There was a.
I don't remember if they had.
Candles.
Downlighting, did they?
They did, they did.
They did, they had a photometric plan, as I recall, but it was a little difficult to figure out, as I recall, if the canopy lighting was included or not.
Yeah, I mean.
I mean, there is.
Two, is that two-foot candles underneath?
Yeah.
That's outside the canopy.
Yeah, exactly.
You said they try and get 50?
Yeah, right under, yeah, I guess.
Well, that'd be part of the lighting plan, correct?
But do our bylaws limit?
Well, I don't think we allow 50.
It's supposed to be five, that's why I mentioned.
In our bylaws?
Yes, you know.
And it's, it's five or maybe slightly higher in the center of town here, right?
No, I think it's five everywhere is the max, even under the lights, and I know from other designs that 50, a lot of the gas stations target, and used car dealers target 150.
Used car dealers, whole different.
Yeah.
Whole different.
So there is levels unfamiliar to what we're used to in Norfolk, so.
Well, I'll see, if that's an issue, maybe we'll bring it before you and.
Yeah.
See how you feel about it.
The question was asked, and, you know, we could debate whether or not it's relevant, but last night, one of the questions had to do with how does that compare with Daley's, so it might be a data point in terms of what the lighting is there.
Is that the one at the corner?
Yeah.
Because that seems sufficiently bright to me.
I'll go count.
Take your meter, yeah.
Yeah, that's one light.
Yeah. All right, is there anything else? Anyone else have any questions? Anyone from the public have any questions?
I got a question. I, I.
Anytime in the near future, I guess this is a, this is more of a retail plaza question, because this is considered a retail plaza.
Mm-hmm.
Is, are the heights of the signs going to be changed at all, down the line at all? I know there's a new committee that's been formed, any ideas, suggestions, comments?
Well, there's.
Because there are some signs in town that are higher than 15 feet.
Well, there are some, not new ones, though.
Grandfathered ones.
Yeah, grandfathered ones.
I guess any consideration on 1A?[1739.82]
I haven't seen any recommendations.
Haven't started yet.
Yeah, so none of those, they probably won't even be discussed this year, as far as I can see. I mean, they're looking at other things. That's what that committee was formed for, they are looking at other things.
I would only add, if you have suggestions as to what you would like to see the town move to, I'm all ears, you can bring it to me.
All right, thank you very much.
Thanks for your input.
Do we have to make a motion?
What time is this, right?
No.
Public hearing, no, we just.
No, we just scheduled a public hearing.
Got it.
Thank you.
All right.
Thanks, gentlemen.
All right, what do we have to?
Okay.
Fernridge.
Thank you.
The never-ending Fernridge.
They're like twins.
Now, what are we discussing on Fernridge?
We read your note.
Not much.
There's something more about Winston Road improvements. I haven't been up there, so have there been any improvements to Winston Road?
They've raised all the, all the catch basins, and now we're talking about, and that's what the memo is, is to how it should be paved.
Oh, okay.
This came out this afternoon.
I'm on vacation, so I haven't read any emails or anything, so.
We'll take a minute to review it, sure.
It's pretty clear.
Is it?
So, I think, I think.
Are they narrowing the road?
They did, they did narrow the road, they put in sidewalks, they put in some loom in the, between the sidewalk and the road, as well as behind the sidewalk. Bob McGee is not satisfied with the looming that was done on the backside of the sidewalks, it can, leaves a little gully there for water to collect, so they've got to correct that as part of these next improvements. So, long story short, though, the three lots that were released by the planning board to the satisfaction of the DPW director, those lots have not been released yet, so we're still waiting on these things to be done.
All right, so that's the nuts and bolts of it.
Pretty much, yeah. There's more details in there, but you probably don't want to be bored with that.
I'll read it at my leisure.
There you go.
Steve, go back to the previous item. We're going to run this by DRB. We should, I think, just.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, I just sent it to Bob, Nick Ademus.
Okay, thanks.
242 Main Street. Are we supposed to be reviewing and endorsing an A&R plan for 242?
You are, I have it right here.
Do we have comments on it?
Yep, they're in your pocket.
All right.
Before I do, Denham Street, not Main Street.
No, it's Main Street.
Main Street.
Yeah, we have 42 and all over the place.
I did the same thing, Walter.
Yeah.
I think three or four times, too.
It's like symmetry or something.
No, we're 242s for a while.
Cheap as preface, yeah.
Can't come in front of the board unless your address is 242.
42 Main Street, oh God. 42 Main Street.
Here's the, right here, Walter. I want to take a look at it.
Come around, see what it says. Did somebody make a house into three, four, may lots, or?
There were three lots there existing.
Three existing lots, they're all part of a family.
Oh, okay, I know where this is.
Yeah.
They just sectioned them off and ate out them?
They just cut off the back of two and gave it to one.
Cut off the back of these two and gave it to this guy?
Yeah.
This is where they've been doing the stone wall?
Exactly, yep.
To create the new sidewalk?
Yep.
That's being done by the town, right?
Yep.
So, these two pieces get added to this lot?
Yep.
The rear sections of those two lots.
Get added to it. What's the purpose of that?
Well.
Beyond my pay scale.
The three lots.
They're not building anything, right?
The three lots were owned by the same family.
Yep.
But now the older members are passing away, and they're selling these.
Main Street lot.
The two.
Two Main Street lots, okay.
Yeah, and the son owns that one, so he utilizes the rears, the rear of those properties.
I see.
It's going to shed, and be hides, and things like that, so.
Is it the son's?
Yes.
Does it matter that he has a structure that is over the property line?
Existing, and the property lines haven't changed.
There seems to be a few items that look kind of important, that don't have any follow-up comment.
Number one?
Number one, two, and four.
Yep, I did talk to Bob Bullock, and so they are grandfathered lots, so that's number one, it's not an issue.
Well, his comment says that the change in area will not result in loss of grandfather rights, is that true? Is that what Bob is saying?
Mm-hmm.
The last sentence here, too.
Oh.
It is, however, a new lot. How can a, how can a new lot have grandfather rights?
Yeah.
A new lot?
I mean, I don't want one of the, I don't want these guys to get in trouble, but they have an opinion from the building commissioner, so I guess that's sufficient for the time being, but I hope they sought some legal advice with respect to that. It's a new lot, it should conform.
How is it a new lot?
Because you're changing the boundaries, it's a new lot, didn't exist before.
Is there any latitude in that, Tom, like increasing a pre-existing by 25%?
Gino, it seems to be new lots.
Yeah.
Do not predate the adoption of zoning laws.
There is that strange provision of the subdivision control lot, that you can subdivide properties with existing buildings on them, but I forget all the details of those provisions, but just, it concerns me, but, you know, as long as he doesn't run into a problem, it's okay.
Well, when does this have to be signed by?
Tonight.
Tonight's the deadline?
They've got a closing, yeah.
Well, we could give them our approval, but just put that caveat up.
Yeah, they can't rely on this to create or release the easements, they're planning on just abandoning easements on there?
The driveway easement was added to the plan, as requested by Bob Bullock.
There was a, an easement that went down, so the northern, the southern boundary of the northern lot, went all the way to the back, what that was for.
You're real familiar with it, Ray, could you just point out the changes?
Yeah, sure. Obviously, the lot changes, the lot lines changed, so you can see a lot lines. There was a, there was an easement that ran the length of this property, all the way to this property line.
And what was this easement for?
I don't know.
It was an access easement.
To this property?
It must have been.
That's the only thing I can.
Who held the easement?
It was to this property, it ended at this property. I don't know what the deed said as to what that easement was, but that's being extinguished. What they are doing is because the driveway is being shared, they're creating a driveway easement, an access easement here for both properties to get to and from.
Yeah, doesn't get back to the basics, Ray, that we approve, and they are a lot, all we're saying is the area and the frontage meet zoning requirements. We're not saying that easements are proper, or buildings are in setbacks, we're not saying any of that, we're just saying that these three lots.
Meet the minimum zoning requirements.
Exactly.
Yes.
Now, as they go to the next step, whether it be to build, or improve.
Right.
Now they have to deal with these issues that are still on record, which is the easement records, and a building that's, that's, you know, covering two lot, two lots, et cetera, things like that.
You're right, there could be some title issues that they run up against when they try to go to the closing.
Yeah, and even, even the building inspectors, Tom says it as a courtesy to the, to the landowners, but the conversation between the building inspector applicant really has nothing to do with that process here, saying that these lots conform.
That's right.
Am I correct?
That's right.
So, I mean, nice to give them a heads up, though, because if they think one thing, maybe.
Well, particularly, the other issue here that Gino mentioned is variances were granted on these lots, so if a lot disappeared upon which the variance was granted, I don't.
We're saying it conforms to zoning, but nothing else.
All we're saying, it's got frontage on the way and has adequate area, and we're just hoping the guys not getting in trouble, but. Exactly. Is there a build factor on that anywhere? Does that new lot have a build factor?
No, it's just got the square footage of the lot.
Well, again, we don't look at build factor when we do A&Rs.
Even just looking at it, it doesn't look like there should be an issue with the build factor.
I can mention to the building commissioner that there was a question whether these lot lines have changed, and they are, in theory, new lots, they're grandfathered.
Mm-hmm.
Just to do some, maybe you can actually talk to him, Ray.
I already had a conversation with him, yeah, that was his determination, was to dis- grandfather.
Okay.
Okay, is there agreement among the board that we should approve these? Okay, do we have a motion for this?
All right, let's see. I move to accept the site plan modifications for 242 Main Street for.
Nope, nope, the eggs, nope.
All right, back me up, then.
Motion to endorse the A&R plan.
A&R plan for 242 Main Street.
Oh, Jesus, yeah.
I know.
Got me again.
I shouldn't have done the 242s back to back.
No, you shouldn't, but that's all right, that's my fault. All right, so I move to approve the, the A&R plan for 242 Main Street.
And on Medway Street.
And on Medway Street.
Second.
Well, dated, what's it dated?
Dated, yeah, is there a date there?
May 25th.
As prepared by sentence.
May 25th.
Dated May 25th, and as prepared by.
Yeah, and, and signed and sealed on July 8th.
Signed and sealed on July 8th, yes.
Is there a second to that?
Second is amended.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
All right, so we need to sign that sign before we go, right?
Thank you.
All right, we're done with our business. It's only 20 past eight. 240 Denham Street, review and approve site and special permit denial. Do we have that in front of us here?
Yep, there's three denials to review tonight.
Let's see.
240 Denham, yeah, this is this one here, okay. Okay.
Nope, no, six. The pasture.
Nor do I.
It's fine.
Do we have a motion for this denial?
I'm going to move that we approve the site plan and special permit denial decision for 240 Denham Street, dated July 8th, 2014. Decision number 2013-dash, dash 12, I guess.
11 and?
11 and 12.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Same thing on 106, 108.
So, that's another one you want us to sign tonight, right?
Yep, I have them all ready for you.
All righty.
The special permit for 201317 is for 108 Main Street.
No, oh, yeah, good touch.
Yes, just got a typo. I think so. As you see, as you may recall, I abstained on those votes, and the reason for that was that I agreed with Steve's original proposal that the vote be postponed until the applicant could be present, but had the applicant, had we agreed with that position and the applicant was here tonight, I would have voted to deny, so. That's what I thought was the right thing to do.
Did we ever sign the original, didn't we, we denied it once before, and to get it back on track, did we ever sign that denial?
The.
No, they withdrew the.
They withdrew. Didn't we deny one and withdraw the other?
Yeah, 108, you denied, and we filed and just submitted on that.
We did sign that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Then they reapplied.
Right, so I guess under the 108, it has the same dates as the 106, or I guess these are both the new ones, and after that.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense.
They had withdrawn.
Yep. And when they resubmitted this time, they didn't come in, it didn't come in originally as the PMLD?
Yeah.
That was later?
The PMLD was filed as a special permit under that site plan review.
Okay, that doesn't need to be noted under their procedural or anything like that? That it could change to that?
No, because it references the special permit above, oh, wait a minute, I'm sorry, row one, yeah, site plan and special permit, okay.
You denied the subdivision application.
For 108, right?
You denied the subdivision application.
Correct, 108.
For 108, so we wouldn't have all these dates in here for 108.
Then they refiled, and the public hearing process started all over again for both of them.
At the same time, it's just that one was previously denied and one was withdrawn.
Oh, oh, okay, got it. Anyone see anything in here that has to be corrected?
Nope.
She's already got that changed.
You got that typo, the one typo?
Okay, do I have any motions on these?
Let's do them separately, I'm going to move first to accept the site plan and special permit denial for 106 Main Street, decision number 2013-16, dated June 10th, 2014.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. I abstain because of not attending the site plan process.
And then I'm going to move to accept the site plan and special permit denial for 108 Main Street, decision number 2013-17, dated June 10th, 2014.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, I abstain for the same reason, I wasn't attending the site plan review process.
We have an associate member appointment already? Didn't we just appoint someone?
I know.
Like a month ago?
She's like. Well, it expired June 30th.
She expired before she even started.
Associate member has expressed interest in extending her appointment.
Do we want to re-advertise or? No? Okay. Does someone want to make a motion for, to recommend somebody, namely Anne Reilheim Hauser, for the associate member?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh. Any opposed? No.
I didn't hear John down there.
Oh. Hampton roadside Form G previous, what?
Hmm?
What is this?
Sign the Form G2 bond previously established.
Is that the lot release form?
It is.
Your new number? G2?
Oh. Do we have any, anything, have you got a list of things for this roadway?
Yeah, we approved, we approved the amount at a prior.
Oh, okay.
The board approved a bond amount in the amount of $175,250.
And we've already got the.
You have already voted on that, so now we just have the forms and the lot, and the lot release forms that need to be signed.
What kind of bond was it, a tripartite?
It is, no, it's a surety bond.
You haven't Ray putting those into the ticklers for the expiration dates?
I have not yet.
Because I don't think the insurance companies notify you anymore when these expire, so you really.
Yeah, you get a statement.
You have to be on it, so this is.
Yeah, we need to create a database for that.
All bonds.
Yeah.
They got out of hand years ago, I remember. Before you.
All right, do we have a motion to release these lots?
So moved.
Well, let's mention them out loud.
All right, let's do that. Can I have that form back?
You betcha, here, there's a lot release form, John.
Motion to approve lot releases for Hampton Drive, lots number W1A, W2A, W30, W.
3D.
W3D, W4D, W5A, W6A, W12B, W11A, W10, W9, W8A, all on Hampton Road and Maple Park Estates 3.
Did you say W10? They were a little out of order from what I have in front of me, so.
Yes, I did.
Okay. All right, do we, a second on that?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we've already scheduled our next meeting. Scheduled a hearing for Winding Hollow, nine lots off Holbrook Street. Do you want to fit it on the 29th?
Absolutely.
All right.
Is this the one that Tom DePlastido came to us with that, that corner on the corner with the grade change?
Has anyone been up there?
I drove by.
Boy, hacking away that hillside would make a big difference up there. I was up there, I was completely confused. I should have had that plan in front of me because I couldn't figure out where anything was going by the markings that were in there.
Has that new agent determined that the plan is complete and submitted?
We have not yet reviewed it.
No. I, I had a, an opinion, if I could share with the planning board.
Oh, okay.
About that corner and about the location of, of that subdivision, the way it was laid out. I actually looked at it contrary to the way you did, looking at that corner thinking, well, you take that corner down, now you put an entrance right on the corner.
Correct.
Granted that you, granted that you have increased the sightlines because you basically obliterated every tree along the, basically the frontage of that subdivision. I, in fact, I had the occasion to sit down with Tom DePlastido and I shared my opinion with him and I suggested to him that maybe he look at this as maybe a cul-de-sac or maybe a cul-de-sac creating a Y of some sort, coming in basically where the stone columns are and going back into the field, because essentially he's, he's, he's cutting down one bank and trying to take that bank down. On the other side, he's going to be filling in two kettle holes that, I'm not sure why you'd even want to address those things, and you're taking away all the, all the frontage trees that people have come to know about that street. So you, you've really changed that whole landscape over there into something completely different.
Well, he, I think he has more houses in there than he could fit on a cul-de-sac, doesn't he?
He's got nine.
I reviewed that as far as the conservation commission goes and two of those lots in the, was it the cul-de-sac also are really in a no build zone.
Oh, are they really?
So basically approving a conceptual plan that would be allowed, should be allowed based on no special permits or orders of condition or things like that. And right now, I believe when Ray and I looked at it, the cul-de-sac and the back two lots all would need special orders of condition for the conservation to be acceptable, so that regard, that's not, that's not an open split, that's not a conventional plan that would qualify and encumbered, along with the design changes that Ray talked about.
You're talking about the cul-de-sac that he's recommending?
I'm talking about the plans.
No, the one that, on the conventional.
Oh, oh.
Because you've got to do the conventional plan for us to show the way your lot yield is.
The conventional plan should be able to be performed without any special permits or any orders of condition.
Right.
In this case, there's two, and this has been a past that we've noticed, and in this case here, the last two and the road because of the flood. Aside from the fact that Ray thought that the change in the road design should be needed because you're creating a site easement problem coming up that hill with a big elevation change and a big curb change.
I shared that concern at the meeting that we had. I think some comments were made and it certainly would be an improvement in terms of one-way in and out type, type thing, so that I think would be helpful, but I still, I personally wasn't seeing it clearly in terms of, you know, having a safe, you know, scenario on that, that curve regardless of what was done with cutting, you know, grade and grading and such.
I can add to that, there was definitely this, you've got a grade change and then you've got a curve at the same time.
Mm-hmm.
So you've got two bad conditions at the same time and then you're, and you're introducing an intersection at that same location. It just seems like there's, there's way too much going on.
There was just an egress, though, that was at the, at the end of the curve, right?
Well, we, he hadn't presented it that way, but we had talked about some.
Yeah, Michelle made a good suggestion, man, we felt would be helpful.
It would be entering like further away by the towers.
Yeah, I understand.
And then an egress at the top so that they, they'd be able to see fairly easily on it, on an egress only.
Sure. Slightly better. I mean, at the end of that meeting, the way I, you know, left that meeting, I felt that I needed to really see it, you know, some type of, you know, photos or some type of renditions that would help me feel more comfortable with it. So, you know, that might be the gentleman's plan is to come and present that and I'm trying to be open-minded, but so far I'm very concerned about that curve.
I would strongly suggest you get out where the two columns are, just pull your car right up there and then you can kind of walk around a little bit.
That's exactly what I did, yeah.
You've just got to get a sense as to what's going on. And then if you can, go down to the bottom and then you can pull off to the side of the road where the entrance to the gun club is, because there's a little, little opening there, you can also kind of get a sense as to what you're dealing with, because there's a huge grade change.
Oh, yeah.
You know, the planning board rules and regulations state that before a plan is actually put on the agenda for public hearing, the plan should be deemed complete and there's a list on our rigs of all the documents needed. And without an agent, I'm happy to see that we appointed Ray the agent because he can determine whether the applications are complete. It stops you from having the butters looking at sketches and not the drainage plans and all that without proper notification. And before Ray was here, in theory, the planning board was supposed to vote and approve on the completeness of every plan, much like the ZVA, before a plan gets notified by the butters. And the theory is when a butters come in with their consultant to look at a plan and they've given that 14-day time period, they have that time to look at the complete plan. So when the drainage report isn't there or one of the other required documents aren't there, they're coming in and looking at incomplete plan. So I was pleased to see that we have an agent now whose job is, well, one of the main jobs, I think, from what I read the regulations for, is to make sure all submittals are complete before they get put on the public hearing agenda, so the butters get a chance to look at a completed plan. And speaking of that, do we have drainage goals?
No, because this is just a preliminary and then the special permit for the open space.
Oh, okay.
So there's no drainage calculations required at the moment.
Next stage.
Oh, it's.
So you'd like to see something visually, where it's absolute, right, that you know what it's going to look like when it's constructed the way they're recommending?
Yeah, but, you know, to John's point, you know, I don't want to circumvent the process if in fact the expectation that there's.
Well, this is a preliminary plan, though.
Okay, so if that's appropriate, something like that.
I think that that might be a good idea to recommend that.
You know, if you're going to do that, you might ask the fellow to also follow up with a sketch of what Ray proposes, since, you know.
Yeah.
But we do have a 500-foot limit on a cul-de-sac.
And he's going to have to do a new sketch with the conventional plan, just showing what's allowed without any permits or special orders, so he'll have to draft up a new concept plan.
Yep. All right, so.
Is he a member of the yard changes, Ray? Or did you speak to him about that?
I spoke to him about that and he didn't say no, but he didn't say yes.
Well, as a minimum, he has to make the conceptual plan proper.
So, I mean, couldn't, can we fit that preliminary plan on the 29th also? I don't want to jam it up too much. Okay, discuss that, meeting minutes, sign vouchers. Do you have vouchers for us to sign?
I do.
You want to start circulating before everyone here gets itchy and wants to get out?
Absolutely.
Okay, so we'll schedule that one also for the 29th and I think that that's about all we're going to put on the 29th, right?
Yep. I think that's all we've. I'll put that out for about 8 o'clock.
Sure. We've got a little time to discuss the consultant contracts. Review, review the many meetings, the meeting minutes.
Yeah, I have reviewed the meeting minutes for a June 10th meeting and they're acceptable to me as typed and you have a copy in your notes.
Okay.
So I move to accept the minutes of the meeting of June 10th as presented by the, by the planning board assistant here.
All those in favor?
Just a discussion, point of discussion, I just, if I could have a few minutes, I just have.
Oh, oh, okay.
Sure. All right.
These are the, those three decisions?
I can't sign.
Oh, you can't sign.
106, 108, because I abstained, but the other one I can sign.
You can sign 240 Dedham?
Hey, Tom, did you get together with the applicant from MacArthur Ave and discuss the plans that they had?
Sorry about you.
All right.
We were originally asked to formally review them. I spoke to Landmark Engineering and Paul said that they didn't want us to formally review them.
Hampton Road Lot Releases.
So I gave him what I understood would to be the basic tenants that the planning board was looking for, that the road had to be improved along the lot frontage for a distance equal to the lot frontage otherwise required in the district. I reminded him of Bob McGee's desire to install a water main at some point in the future. I expressed concern about the drainage in terms of the velocity of water coming down that very steep slope that he needs either to bring it off the roadway or to put multiple drainage structures there. I expressed concerns about recharging untreated stormwater, which is not consistent with master EP policies, so I, I kind of went through the basics with them verbally. They decided, I guess, that they do not want a written report, so I just talked to them about it.
Oh, okay, because I thought that, that, I remembered what you remembered, that they were going to show you some plans and you were going to look at them and comment.
We have those plans and I advised them that it would take us a day to look at them or whatever it was and I guess they didn't want to go forward with that, but they wanted, they wanted just the benefit of my thoughts verbally, so I gave it to them. I think I conveyed the board's concerns about it, so.
Because I'd like to see what they're planning on going forward with, because if they show us what they're planning on going forward with, then we can get a comment from the highway superintendent as to what their plan is.
Yeah, I think the big issue will be that the pavement is going to be quite narrow. He's proposing something like 16-foot of pavement with Cape Cod berms on either side which are actually drivable, so it's like 18 feet. The problem is, he's deviating so much from existing grade, he's way down in a hole and if he makes the pavement wider, then in addition to being down a hole, he's going to build walls along the side of the excavation. I didn't independently verify that, that's what he told me, so.
I'm not so sure he needs walls over there, I did walk the site and.
What site is this? MacArthur Ave, thank you.
I, I thought that we had given two examples of what we'll wave down to. And that would be Toils End Road off of Grove Street, there's a decision on that, and there's one for, I can't remember the name of the street, off of Needham Street?
Evans Way.
Evans Way. There's two of them where the widths were, were narrow.
I had, I didn't look at those two because I didn't have time to prepare before he called, but I told him that I thought the planning board would go something in the 20 to 22-foot range, but he doesn't think he can do that cost-effectively, so I'm not sure what he's coming back with.
I talked to Bob McGee on that.
What's that?
I talked to Bob McGee on that MacArthur Ave.
Yeah.
He does not want that to be a.
It won't be a top road. But they have to have frontage. Can't stop waving it because wave it for one person, there'll be an avalanche of people wanting it waved.
But I guess it does set a precedent in terms of allowing a new non-public way to provide frontage, which has been, not been the case in Norfolk. I know a lot of towns do that on a regular basis, but the practice in Norfolk has been not to allow that, I understand, so.
You have to have a good reason for doing it. There always has to be rationale for doing it and we know what the rationale is.
The town doesn't want to maintain this.
Well, it's just that, it's, it's just due to the grade. The town doesn't want to have a roadway with that kind of a grade on it. Good God, what would the grade be? 14%?
Uh, he, the plan he came in with, I think, was 12, but that's, that's.
That was 12 with them already cutting into it?
Yeah, it was very substantial.
Which maximum grade a lot of time?
It depends on the class of the road, but I think it's like.
Secondary.
Eight.
Okay.
We have a motion on the table to accept these.
Oh, yeah. Do we have a second? Did you say seven?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we signed the vouchers, correspondence, any correspondence we have to do?
No, but there's a, there's a report that you wanted to cut.
There is a water quality report in the folder that Betsy took back. We have copies of it distributed by the DPW. You'll probably be able to find your book, I may.
Water quality report.
Water, not water quality as much as water.
Oh, that report.
Capability report, yeah, by Environmental Pot.
That was, that was issued a few months ago, right?
Yes, it was.
We have copies here for everybody. Is this the same report that you already had issued?
Yes, we got it.
Yeah.
Would you like another copy or?
I would like a copy.
Because I got the first one, as I recall.
I think we had an email to us, didn't we?
No, it was in a, it was in a packet one week.
This report was, report was dated March 31st.
All right. It looks like we're, oh, did you have some, sir?
Before we do that, still on the subject?
Oh, okay.
John had said he had some information about this, that he wanted to share with.
Oh, does he? Oh, okay. John.
Well, I attended a meeting with Phil and Bob McGee and Jack Hathaway regarding a project and I guess from what they say, we have a situation where I think our water capacity capacity is in the range of 10 to 15% more capacity. And we have presently 800 people that, once a resident gets an occupancy permit, whether they have a well or not, we are required, if their well goes defunct, to connect them to town water. So the unlikely scenario that all 800 people that qualified would connect is unlikely. But that being said, if the 800 people that would be required to connect to town water connected, and with the 200 and somewhat lots that have already been approved in, in different, different phases of construction or laying dormant, that brings the capacity down to present a much more severe problem, and the fact that if we have a slowdown in one of the wells are an issue, then that could put us in jeopardy. And as always the case, they had mentioned of buying water from, I think Franklin or Rentham.
Rentham, yeah, a couple towns.
But they don't want to do that because you pay retail prices and it gets pretty expensive, so. This was on the vein of the new construction and the rules about whether technically on a 600-lot proposed project, or take Southwood where he's proposing 700 rental units, is the town obligated to provide water to that new project, or they're rights to deny it? Because right now, if you take our contingent liability with all the lots approved and all of the people that are on well that would, would have to connect to, then you're talking a much more, a much more dramatic strain on the quality. So I think it's up to others to find out. I think Jack Hathaway was going to check into what are legal rights on these projects, and we have one at the Buckley Man, which has around 300 units. Southwood told us the other night that they're talking about potentially 700 rental units, and they're looking to get their water from Walpole. But right now, it's, it's safe, but if there was a perfect storm, so to speak, then it could be in much more jeopardy. And they've been looking for the new well site probably for the past seven or eight years, but it's a long process, expensive process, and they haven't found a site yet that's capable of acting as a full-time well.
Anything to add from the selectmen's point of view?
I mean, it's recognized, and, you know, discussions are taking place as far as, you know, how to proceed and what areas we believe could be the most fruitful as far as pursuing, you know, a well at some point in time, but I, I mean, I think it's, it's also recognized that it is a long-term process, so, you know, it's not something that we can, you know, postpone indefinitely here, we're going to have to do something. So, you know, I think it's a good segue, John, because we actually had very good representation here from, from this, this group at a meeting that took, took place last night. Walter and John and Ray, I mean, they're officially members of this, this group that has been put together to, to discuss Southwood in terms of what's being proposed there, and actually to the developer. George Valone was present yesterday evening, and he shared his latest thoughts in terms of what he would like to do with the property. So it was an excellent conversation. I mean, obviously, there's concerns in terms of particularly the residential component and, you know, what that could bring in terms of additional students and costs in terms of our, our schools. So of course, representatives from the town shared those concerns with the developer, and so we have this, you know, this, I would say at this point, it's a healthy debate and tension between the developer and the town in terms of what might be reasonable, so it's still very early in the process, but, you know, there are some pretty significant numbers which the gentleman is proposing, and it's a question of what those numbers would consist of in terms of how many units would be rental units versus how many would be property owners occupied by the owners, the size of the units, there were various visions which were communicated in terms of two-bedroom with a one-bedroom attached, you know, unit as opposed to perhaps one-bedroom with studio attached unit. There were various concepts such as that that were discussed, but it's very early, but I think it's a good idea that we keep this as a standing agenda item for this group so that you feel sufficiently informed as to what's taking, taken place with the developer. The developer also indicated that if for some reason, you know, we can't meet this, this deadline, which we viewed as a hard deadline for him in terms of having acceptable zoning, whatever that means, but from his perspective, something acceptable, you know, he can, you know, he can back out of his agreement with the archdiocese as far as the purchase of the land, so we felt that that was a hard deadline, and he's coming to understand the fact that we have some aggressive deadlines here in terms of when we need to get some of the language together for warrant articles for town meeting. It's not two weeks before town meeting, it's, you know, you have to start getting this information together here by the end of the summer. So he's now recognizing that, and he's suggesting that he might even, you know, be given some type of, you know, reprieve in terms of what, what was previously considered a hard deadline here between him and the archdiocese in terms of his agreement. So, so I guess we'll, you know, we'll see how that all shapes up here going forward. So a number of things were discussed, I mean, John, Walter, Ray, I don't know if there are any other high points that.
Well, just building on the water issue, clearly he's got utility issues, he's got to solve his water issue first. And he said he's going to approach the prison system to see if they would supply water as they were legally required to do when it was a hospital. Everything we, we know suggests that they'll say they, they can't do it or they won't do it, but he's going to try. His second approach was to go to the town of Walpole and see if they would sell water to him, and the question was, gee, would a town, even if they had the capacity and the willingness, be willing to sell to a private entity? And the opinion around the table here was that, yeah, they probably would. The next question while he was talking to Walpole was, can we connect into MWRA sewer? We tested that with Walpole a couple of years back, at that point, they said they were not interested, but he may find a different answer now, and if he cannot, then he must put a, a package on site, which he can do, and he knows roughly how big it would be and how costly it would be. But those issues need to be resolved before he can really put any money into a site plan development or anything substantial, otherwise he puts his money right down the drain if those issues are not solved.
In any case I've ever been involved with, and there's probably been a dozen or so, any transfer of water across a municipal boundary requires an intermunicipal sewer agreement where the faith and credit of both towns stand behind the agreement. I don't think they'll deal with a private sector individual, I don't know. Can you legally? I don't know, but everyone I've ever been involved with has been town to town.
This is what Jack Hathaway was concerned about. Walpole is MWRA, and you bring near water, the selectmen give them rights to bring the water to our town, we're not sure of the limits on that. So he's concerned about that, he's correct, yeah.
They basically need our permission to bring water into this town from there.
And the public safety issue is huge. You know, you could have a thousand people or more up on that spot, which is in the far outskirts of town, and we have a police department with two patrol officers most nights, I believe, and we have, I think, four firefighters on duty with two ambulances, so the calls that are going up there for all of those units would take away from the whole other side of the town as far as access, so that presents a big problem, too. Got a lot of issues, huge project, a lot of issues.
And I know I strictly talked about residential, I mean, there was a, a commercial, a retail component that he articulated, obviously it's conceptual at this point, but he talked about, you know, perhaps restaurant, coffee shop, dry cleaner, I mean, some of this type of stuff.
All in the hospital.
In his opinion, there's, you know, there's enough to support, you know, those types of businesses there, I mean, you'd have enough units and plus additional.
And there was a, a big discussion about not getting bitten again as a town in terms of someone promising commercial but only delivering residential, and telling him that we need to structure this deal in such a way that we give him a little and then he gives us the commercial, then he gets the rest of the residential, or something to that, some sequenced events where we are guaranteed that the commercial part of it will be built. He understood that and was willing to play. Said he'd played that way before in New Jersey, we'll see if he's willing to really come forward with it.
There was another aspect to this project that hasn't been discussed, and that was the assisted living portion, that's still on the table. And I think right now, he's looking at this whole proposal as very fluid. He knows the number of units that he needs in order to hit his mark in terms of the profits that he needs to make on this project, and in that mix, he's also looking at the commercial and the assisted living. And I was just having some discussions today and looking at some assisted living facilities and thinking, boy, this, maybe that's, that's the gem that we're not, really not paying attention to, maybe we should be paying a little bit more attention to.
Well, that's always been something that people have said that if that play, if that goes in, that has, that that's a requirement, because he said he was going to do it.
Yeah, and it's, but I, I think, I think there's a real need for it, and there's a real, there's a real market for that, that type of thing. I, I think it's, it's maybe a little bit lower than the residential, because residential in a lot of ways is easy. Not that, not that building houses is easy, but in terms of trying to get your money back, it's a little bit quicker than trying to find investors for a project that includes commercial development, assisted living facilities, and, you know, those kinds of things are a little bit, a little bit tougher for them to, to deal with. And I just received some information today, which I shared with, with some folks on the committee, and that was dealing with some of the contamination that was on the site. Back in 91, there was a couple of studies that were done, and they, they basically showed the areas of contamination. There's a geotechnical person that looked at the contamination, there were some observation wells that were, were drilled, and they got some data out of those. So we were gaining more information or relearning the information that was already out there as, as we speak, so.
That brings to mind, I've, I worked with Bob McAdemas and some other folks on the Economic Development Committee for a few years, and Bob's sitting on a pile of data about Southwood. I recommend that you contact him and extract what you can from his files, because he's got a ton of stuff.
Sure.
Now since reinventing the wheel.
I think I did send out to everybody that was on the committee, the reports that I received from Bob, there were, there were a few reports, I scanned each one of them and then sent them all out, so everybody should have copies of those. I did think, I did, do think I sent them to the Board of Selectmen, I'd be willing to share that stuff with the planning board also, if you're interested.
It's interesting, because I think his least concern is the contamination. I think he does this on a regular basis, and that didn't even seem to be a problem.
Well, he's working, as I remember, he was working with a partner who was going to do the, the brownfield cleanup.
Right, and half the site they're not touching, half of the site is contaminated and wetlands, and they're just staying away from that. The other site, the only part that has to be cleaned is an oil spill from one of the buildings they have to clean, but I don't think he thought that was a big issue.
It's, it's considerable, if you look at the drawings of where that plume is, is going, it was something on the order of 20,000 gallons that leaked. That's a lot, that's a lot.
It's an awful lot.
But anyway, you're right, he, he's not concerned, because I think his partner's going to take care of that.
Yeah, didn't seem to be.
On another subject, I noticed on my way up the driveway, I just figured, since we know someone on the Board of Selectmen now, maybe you could bring up the topic of making a decision on the gazebo down there as to the, the display boards. Remember that? And we were waiting for the Board of Selectmen for their decision on that, and it's just, it's just sitting down there.
The kiosks.
The kiosks, yeah.
To be honest with you, my recollection was that, that rested with the planning board.
No, it's our final decision, but since they're the ones that are going to be managing it, we decided that they were going to pick the final layout or, or the type of plan that they want, whether they want something with cork that people could stick stuff in themselves, or they're sealed and they request things to be put inside.
I think this would be a great opportunity for a joint meeting of some kind to make some decisions, because I think one of the concerns is whatever is done, that it's maintained in terms of, you know, how is this going to be maintained?
Right.
And that's always a challenge with any investment in terms of how is it maintained, who is going to maintain it?
Well, we always figured that, that they would end up ultimately being the people that are going to maintain it, because this board doesn't maintain things around the town.
So on my way to work, I'll have to put this, and I know you drive different ways to work, so I'll have to put this on my.
Yeah, yeah.
My route to work in the morning.
Don't we have GATRA service in town now, Jeff? Don't we have GATRA service, the bus service?
Yes.
Why don't we make that a bus stop? People can sit underneath there when the weather's inclement and.
I know that, I know that Jim Lehan has been trying to.
Yeah, I didn't know that.
Trying to expand, improve the GATRA service, because I think we would like to see GATRA service, the senior center, my understanding is that it doesn't. So that is an issue in and of itself in terms of what you can ask these folks to do, in terms of, you know, how many stops they're willing to make, because I, I don't know enough about it just yet, but.
We also have two taxi companies in town.
Didn't know we had a bus, that's new to me.
GATRA, yeah.
Yeah.
Doesn't go many places, but.
Where does it go?
I think it goes to Franklin and Patriots Place and.
From where? Does it stop in this town?
Just local, yes.
I think DJ is going to give us all an education here.
I know, she's getting something out of it for us.
Just a guess.
I saw, I saw a GATRA bus pulling out of the playground up on.
Kids' place. It's the Pond Street.
Not the new one, no, the Pond Street one.
Oh, the Pond Street.
Pond Street.
And I just happened to see it today coming in, and I thought, boy, that's peculiar.
We thought that about three years ago.
Okay.
Limited stops.
Be nice to know what those stops are.
I just figured it's about time that we finished that thing off.
Well, it's funny you said that. When Ray came, that was, I handed him my file folder, I said, it's all yours.
For which?
The kiosk.
Oh, for that, in the kiosk.
And I asked her, what are we going to do with it? And then I asked her, who's going to maintain it? So I think I hit the same issue.
I actually even took pictures of the, the message board in Franklin and printed it out and put it in the folder.
Sell advertising.
That was discussed at one time, correct?
I remember that, yeah.
Under glass type of thing.
Because Dave Roach actually brought in the, the signage that they use in the, in the case.
It actually could be used as a message board more than anything else to get public notices out there of stuff that's going right. The only problem with it, it's not in a high-traffic area. If it was near one of the roundabouts, I think it would get a lot more looks, but not in front of Town Hall or Walgreens.
So I think the question is, is the audience, people in vehicles or passersby on foot, which I'm not sure how much foot traffic there really is right there, and I don't think there's much.
Not a ton.
You know, when they, when they finish building out here, there might be a lot more foot traffic.
Yeah.
Certainly a lot.
That's the potential.
The pessimist in me says we may have to rebuild that, that thing. It may be rotted and falling down by that point.
Yeah.
Let's, let's hope not, we're going to be more optimistic.
Any other topics?
The, the foot traffic really is around the train, that's where the foot track is. Any other topic?
We done? Do we have a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Send a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.